I'd like to welcome everybody and call this regular meeting of the Bethel Board of Selectmen to order for Tuesday, July 21st, 2020. All of you can display the flag, and I would ask everybody to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Before we get started, there's two changes I need to make to the agenda. First one is, we had a Public Utilities Commission meeting last night, and there were two purchases that were authorized by the PUC that Tom Villa, the Director of Utilities, thought had to go to the Board of Selectmen to be approved as well as the PUC, but they do not. So I'm going to make a motion that we eliminate items number 10 and number 11 from the agenda. And then after that, I'm going to make a motion to add one new item. So my motion is to eliminate consideration of generator installation at Briar Cliff Pump Station and consideration of generator installation at Eureka Water Treatment Plant. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, double seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now I'm going to make a motion that we add to the agenda, which would be new item number 10, an item that because of my lousy record-keeping was supposed to be on the agenda and I left it off. This is request to display pride flag, which was sent in to us on July 7th. And I'm going to make a, that's a request to the Board of Selectmen, so I'm going to add that, make a motion that we add that as new item number 10. Okay, any discussion? And hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion carries, and that will be new item number 10. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the approval of the regular minutes of July 7th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
Okay, Paul made the motion. Rich seconded. Any discussion or corrections on those minutes?
I just have a comment. I don't see anything when you came out of executive session. We put down the time when we came out of executive session. I see, but I don't see anything coming out.
I can go back and I can, I can make a...
Yeah, just correct it, that's all.
To that.
All right.
You'll amend it.
Yeah, I have that in my written notes at the office, so I, because I wrote down what time we came out on the sheet. And I know Dionne has it too, all right. So we'll, don't have that with us tonight, but we'll make a note of that. Okay, any other corrections or comments?
No.
Hearing none? Those in favor of accepting with that provizio that they are, that the time of executive session ending is added? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. First Selectmen's report, a couple things to cover with you tonight. Seems like old news now, it's been more than a week, but I'm very pleased to report, as was reported at the Board of Finance meeting last week, that the town was reaffirmed with its AAA bond rating at our recent rating review. Came through that with flying colors. I want to thank Mr. Kozlowski, Terry Jansky, and of course, our colleagues on the Board of Finance, both present and past Boards of Finance, for maintaining the town sterling credit rating. And just to tell you how important this is and what a difference it makes, just last week, we saw, we had a very successful sale of bond anticipation notes, which are short-term notes, and a 20-year bond. Both of these are to cover the construction, the renovation of the two elementary schools, Johnson and Rockwell. The band, the bond anticipation note, and the amount of $20 million, was sold at a net interest rate of 0.29%, which is a new record, and actually beat some of the other AAA-rated towns in the state, such as the town of Greenwich. The $20 million 20-year bond sold at a net interest rate of rounding slightly, 1.56%. So over the life of this, you know, what's going to be for the town of $40 million plus renovation of the two schools, this will save us significant amounts of interest. So I want to thank all my colleagues for all their hard work and their consistent leadership and strategy when it comes to Bethel's finances. We are in fine shape, we have a strong fund balance that's going to get us through this COVID thing and in pretty good shape, and these results really prove it. Another thing to report to you tonight, the legislature, after going dormant at the start of the global pandemic, has kind of come to life. There is a, there is a special session, which has been called by the governor, which begins tomorrow. There are four items on that special session agenda. Going to start tomorrow, on the 22nd, with the House of Representatives, and then whatever they do will be taken up by the Senate the following week, on July 28th and 29th. But it's, I forwarded my colleagues a couple of correspondences from CCM that explain what's on there. There is, there's going to be a significant amount of discussion about expanding voting by mail in the fall elections, the fall presidential elections. It's extremely controversial, as you might imagine. The primary that's coming up on August 11th is falling under the authority of the governor's executive order with the expanded vote by mail, but basically it's expanded absentee voting. But those executive orders expire on September 9th. The governor's ability, his statutory ability to declare an emergency, and that's, the emergency is what gives that, gives the governor the power to impose those executive orders. That statute, which is under CGS 2028-9, expires on September 8th. It has a lifespan of 180 days. And after that, the governor has to go to a special legislative committee if he wants to extend any of those orders. So it's unclear as to what's going to happen after September 8th. But, so the legislature is being asked to approve the expanded absentee voting system so that people don't have to feel like they're taking their life in their hands to go vote if this pandemic is still raging at that time. Two other things that they're going to take up, also very controversial, there is a very detailed police accountability bill. Much of the, and I would urge my colleagues, Rich and Paul, to read that very carefully. Much of the bill is really encoding in law a lot of things that the most progressive police departments, management, and leadership is doing already. Like in our, in our case, our police department has long since been a member of Kalia and been accredited by Kalia. Many of the restrictions in the police accountability bill really fall in line with the things that Kalia endorsed towns have been doing all along. But there are a couple other provisions, one of them being what's called the eliminating immunity. They call it limited immunity for municipalities, which could be extremely problematic and could actually cause towns to not be able to insure themselves or insure their police departments for liability. So it's something that needs to be changed, at least recrafted, so that it does, it does no harm and achieves the goal that it's looking for. The other, the other bill that's pending is going to be also very controversial. It's a, it has to do with affordable housing, changes to 830G, and changes to land use policy and land use law that would have the effect of removing a great deal of local control from local planning and zoning authorities. Again, there's, it's a mixed bag. There are some things in there that do need to be done, probably need to be done, to foster a greater amount of affordable housing in the state of Connecticut. But again, it's one of those things where a shotgun approach has the potential to do some harm. So we have to, I would encourage my colleagues to read those bills and communicate with our legislators, with the four delegates who represent Bethel, and that would be Senator Haskell, Senator Kushner, Representative Harding, and Representative Ollie Brennan, and let them know how you feel about that. Council of Small Towns and CCM, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities are both making some very strong statements about the problematic parts of the bill and being supportive of the parts that should be supported in terms of making some positive changes. So that's my report for tonight. I'll stop there and see if Rich and Paul, if you have any questions or comments.
No.
Okay.
I have a question, Matt. And I don't know where we could discuss this, if you wanted to discuss it now or later in the evening. I see Dr. Carver's proposal for opening up the school is the $1.9 million. Where is that money going to come from?
Well, that's, that's a little unclear. There are some modest savings that have accrued from something being closed, but as we've discussed in the past, there are other expenses that have had to be dealt with. The Dr. Carver, Mrs. Jansky, and Bob Manfreda and Bob Kozlowski and I are going to be meeting this week to talk about that. One of the things that Mrs. Jansky did was careful to point out is that the price tag that she put on that reopening is worst-case scenario. There are a lot of variables, there are a lot of moving parts. The state is requiring every school district to basically come up with three fully different plans, ranging from, schools are 100% open, all the way over to schools are 100% closed, or the buildings are closed and school, and the students are all on distance learning, and then hybrid choices in between. So it's, it's, we really are not even going to know what the full impact is until the state makes the determination on how active the virus is, what the infection rate is, and what they're going to allow to happen. Because right now, schools are still in a building remains closed mode, but they're working toward at least a hybrid reopening. So that discussion, as I said, we're going to, we're going to have later this week, and I will keep you guys up to date, I'll send you updates as I get that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay, moving on to item number four, public comments. There are any, any members of the public who'd like to make any comments? You can unmute yourself, or raise your, if you want, you can raise your hand, and Dionne will unmute you, and we'll take them one at a time. And if you don't know how to raise your hand, I think that's down in the participant area, right Dionne?
Yeah, I have Paula Antonelli. Let me just unmute.
Okay.
There you go.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
I have two questions that I'd like to comment on, and both of them have to do with safety. The first one is hunting on town property. I understand that Frank Germanero submitted a letter to the Board of Selectmen asking that hunting be allowed on town property. And I, I'd like to mention that we went through this in 2013 with the Frank property, if you recall, and the Board of Selectmen stated that hunting was never allowed on town property, and the town lawyer also stated that. And you eventually voted to not allow hunting on town property. So I would hope that you would not consider this letter, especially because it mentions hunters as young as 12 to 18 years old. It also mentions no insurance, and they're going to have people sign waivers instead. Both safety issues, I just am totally against hunting on town property.
Hey Paula, you're breaking, you're breaking up.
Make that clear, just again, okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're kind of cutting in now.
Kind of cutting in.
Yeah, I think we got most of that. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'll lean closer. Okay, I'm basically saying that it's a safety issue to...
We lost you Paula.
To, to have citizens and children allowed on that property, including 12, I'm sorry, hello? Including 12 to 18-year-olds.
Okay, we got that. Are you on a cell phone?
No, I'm not on a cell phone. I'm using the, I'm using a microphone from the, you know, that they use for the website.
Okay, it sounds like a low bandwidth Wi-Fi situation, because your voice fades out for a few times.
You're fading out too. Okay, well, you got the gist of what I'm saying, that I feel it's a safety issue, just as it was with the Frank property, that I was told by the Board of Selectmen and the town attorney that hunting is not allowed, I hope that you would vote the same for this situation, especially because it's mentioning 12 to 18-year-olds and no insurance. And I haven't even begun to investigate this yet. I have to see where they're talking about, as far as all town properties, that would include the Frank property then. So that has to be clarified, first of all. My second issue is the Fire Apparatus Committee and the aerial ladder truck. Are different standards being used by different committees of the town in purchasing large equipment for the town? Yes, there are different prices on the equipment, but one of the pieces of equipment I'm talking about $1,000 was approved.
Paula, you're breaking up.
No, you keep fading away. Maybe, maybe you can try calling in with a phone, like with a landline? Are you there?
Okay, yeah, what's the number?
If you go down, do you see on the bottom of the screen where it says mute? There's a little arrow beside it. If you go to the arrow, it says, which, okay. Paula, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so at the bottom of your screen, do you see the, where it says mute? Bottom left?
Yeah.
Okay, you see the little arrow right next to mute?
Right.
If you go to the arrow, it says switch to phone audio, and it gives you several... It gives you...
Okay, what if I switch it to, it says internal microphone built-in, maybe I could try that?
Try that, yeah.
Let's see what happens, let me try that. Now, like Frank Sinatra, what? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, so I switched.
Okay, so far so good, keep going.
Okay, so the first issue was basically the safety issue, it was in the Frank property, with this letter that was submitted by Mr. Germanero. And...
Paula, I have all of that.
Okay, the second issue is the Fire Apparatus Committee that's on the agenda, and the aerial ladder truck. What I've noticed, because I've been following that very carefully since last October and before, and in comparison with the treatment of the purchase of another expensive piece of equipment for the town, I'm noticing that the standards are not the same. And it seems to be very, very, very much more stringent for the aerial act that I've noticed there with one of the members privately, so I will expand on that. But it's adding to me an impropriety in how the entire process is working with the purchase of either replacement or purchase of a new fire aerial ladder or a truck for the Public Works Department. So if you're interested in talking about that, but it's, it's not a fair process. And before this process is completed, I don't know what the Fire Apparatus Committee is going to present, but there's a, I know you don't want me to mention names, so I won't right now, but there's a person that should have refused themselves from the Fire Apparatus Committee. That's what I'm going to tell you right now, in order to have both these processes be fair. And there's one other point, I'll just say one sentence about it, because it's about the Board of Finance. The equipment was approved, actually, a partial amount, $37,000, before they knew the entire amount. See, that's the extreme difference I'm talking about. They never would have approved the price of the ladder repair without knowing what the entire truck is going to cost. So that's an example I like to use there. And, and the aerial ladder is another safety issue. That has been going on for years, that it wasn't working properly, and now it's not working really at all, that they trust it. So they put in an application last October. It was not treated as an urgent matter in my eyes, because it's been going on since last October, and it's still being dragged on. So it takes a year to manufacture a new truck, if that's the choice, and more time to repair it, if that's the choice. So we have different standards going on here, and someone needs to look into that.
I do want to correct just one thing, and I don't want to, I don't mean to get into a dialogue about it, but the Board of Selectmen never prohibited hunting on town property. They prohibited on the Frank property. It was, that's, that's the, hunting has been allowed in Terre Haute for many, many years, but it was prohibited on the Frank property, but not on the governor's.
Is Terre Haute town property?
Yes.
All right, at that Board of Selectmen meeting, I'd have to get the date for you, but it's in my report, it's from about 2013. The town attorney stated, hunting is never allowed on town property. And that's when he informed you, and then in the end, you decided to not allow hunting on the Frank property based on that.
Oh, I will, I will address that offline with you, because there's some errors there, but that's, thank you for your comments.
Okay, can I just make one last statement? My last statement is that I would hope you take into consideration the safety factor of having citizens and families on the same property as hunters, and these hunters are as young as 12 to 18 years old.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any other public comments tonight?
I have one, Matt.
I have Cynthia McCorkindell next.
Okay, then, then Tony, after that, okay. Okay, go ahead Cynthia.
Hi there. Yeah, a couple things, so I heard what Paula said, and I'm just going to tell you my memory briefly is, that was a kind of a sticking point with Aquarian, because we were worried, people were worried that if Aquarian bought the water department, that the hunting would be absolutely forbidden. And so I do recall that there, you have allowed hunting, maybe, I don't know if it's by tacit agreement or not, but you have allowed hunting on Terre Haute. But what I, the comment I want to make is, I'm actually very pleased to hear that you all are meeting together about the $1.9 million, because that's a lot of dough. And I was hoping that a lot of it might come from the COVID-19 relief, even though I know it's only up to 75%. So, yeah, so I mean, I don't want to get into a dialogue, but I just want to express concerns, and express concerns about if that includes the, whatever, I think $350,000 savings quota, I'm putting that in quotes, because who, I don't know exactly what that means as far as distance learning. So those are my two concerns, it's a lot of money, and I would be very interested to know more of a breakdown. And because I joined late, you may have mentioned it, that when they were going to talk about it. So I just, you know, I have some questions, but that's it, thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Like the other one, I will address what I know offline, because a lot of it is not known yet, but I will get back to you.
Very good.
Okay, Tony Ravino, I think you have a comment?
Yes, yes I do. Tony Ravino, 43, Redwood Drive, Bethel. First of all, I'd like to thank the Fire Apparatus Committee for doing an outstanding job in finding out what actually was wrong with this fire apparatus. It is repaired, it's in service. I want to congratulate them, and I want to say thank you to the Board of Selectmen for putting that ad hoc committee together. I think it was a great idea. You had five outstanding people doing that work, and I just hope some people are going to be accountable for their actions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments tonight? Going once, going twice? Dionne, anybody have their hand raised?
No.
All right. Okay, then we'll close that part of the meeting and we'll move on. Item number four, or actually, item number five correspondence, I don't think that there's no, nothing...
There's none.
All right, item number six, consideration of Housing Authority and Augustana Homes abatements. This is an annual thing that we have to do, and I'll turn the microphone over to Mrs. Keiko, who is here with us tonight, our tax collector. And if you want to unmute, just give us a brief outline of what this is, for the record.
Yes, I believe the Board of Finance is familiar with this. This is the taxes on the properties that are under state statute, are covered under the pilot program, which is payment in lieu of taxes. We receive 10% of their rents. Once they end their fiscal year, it's calculated, and they send it to me on a quarterly basis. So we abate the taxes that are calculated on the grand list and get the 10% in lieu. And just for the record, I have looked, we were running a little lower than what the taxes were in prior years, but this year here, in speaking with this... The, I'm trying to think of the name, the gal who handles it over at Reynolds Ridge, their numbers are going to go up this year significantly, because a lot of the units have been remodeled and are rented out again. So we should see a little bit of an increase in that funding there. So that's it. You have any questions?
Yes, I do, and let me ask you this, how often do they review the rental charges?
It's annual, so they, yes, whatever they collect in rents, you know, at the end of the year, they have their auditors, and the state auditors look at those numbers, and everything's calculated, and then they calculate it for the upcoming year, and then we get it on a quarterly basis.
Is this based upon regional, what local rent goes for?
No, the rents there are by income. And so it's based on, you know, I mean, one person could be paying $400, and another could be paying $600, depending on what their income is.
Yeah, and my last question is, what kind of revenue have we received last year? Based upon, I've looked at the total numbers, it's significant, it's in six, seven digits.
You know, I knew you were going to ask that number, and I cannot give it to you, because it doesn't come in steady. It comes in in dribs and drabs, because our year and their year run, do not run concurrently. So right now, we'd be down if I gave you the numbers, but it catches up. You know, I can't really give you a number.
How about for last year?
Well, that's what I looked at, I looked at today, but they have not finished paying, because they have to wait for the state funding to go to them before they can pay me. The only one that is paid up completely is Phineas Park. That's the only one that pays on a regular basis all the time. The Bishop Curtis and Reynolds Ridge both comes a little bit later. And they're the ones that get the most money from the state.
All right, any other questions for Ann?
I just, just a clarification. Augustana, you're only talking about the congregate housing, are you not?
That's correct, it's just Bishop Curtis, the congregate housing, it's not the lower portion. They pay, the lower portions pay, they pay their taxes.
Right, okay, thank you.
Marty, I have a question for you. I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we approve the abatements and put the total. Do I need to list the four properties separately? Do I need to list the four properties separately in the motion?
I don't think you've got to put the amounts, but you might want to list each one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to put a motion on the floor that the Board of Selectmen approved the requested abatement as requested by the tax collector in the amount for the grand list of October first, 2019, in the total amount of two hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents, covering the properties of five through seven Main Street, which is the Phineas Park property, Reynolds Ridge property, sixty, amount of sixty thousand eight eighty-two, the second phase of Reynolds Ridge, sixty-three thousand, one thirty-three, and Augustana Homes slash Bishop Curtis, the amount of fifty-three thousand, seven twenty-three rounded. So the total amount of those four properties again is two thirty-one, five twenty-nine point six four. Take a second. All right, Rich, Rich seconded, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand. All right, that motion carries unanimously. Thank, thank you very much, thanks Ann.
Night.
Thank you for your work on that and have a good night. Going on to item number seven, discussion of Fire Apparatus Commission Report. I'm going to introduce our chairperson for that committee, Rich Thode, who is Bethel resident and chief of the Bridgeport Fire System, very knowledgeable professional. And Rich, I want to thank you and your committee members for the work that you did on that. Just to bring us up to date, and I'm gonna, I'm just going to give Rich his jumping off point. The Bethel Fire Department did request a new truck last year. They said, there were, this was presented at multiple selectmen meetings in which they raised concerns about the current ladder truck, Tower One. They various times said it needed to be rebuilt, but that it couldn't be rebuilt, that the hydraulics were a problem, and then eventually it was removed from service by Bethel Volunteer Fire. The, in January, the Board of Selectmen formed a committee to, of people with experience in fire apparatus and firefighting to.
Matt, you're muted. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. No, you're still muted.
You know what, it's muting itself. I've never seen that happen.
You need a better system.
All right, somebody hacked into the system to make me shut the heck up. All right, all right, okay, I will watch for the little red thing and try to keep going here. So the committee's charge was to examine the truck because there were so many conflicting reports on it, whether it could be fixed, whether the hydraulics were shot. One of the things we were told was that the person who designed the hydraulics had passed away and that there were no plans. We never were really able to isolate an exact cost of putting the truck back into service. So we formed a committee, that committee started meeting in January. Of course, the global pandemic put the Hertz to their schedule for a while, but they did complete their work and so I want to thank the committee for their work and examining the truck, finding out what was wrong and getting it back into service. And I'd like to turn the floor over now to Rich Thode, who's chair of the committee. And this is going to be a brief verbal report. His committee is still going to be preparing a written report to the Board of Selectmen, but they need to write that report and vote on it before they send to us. But I did want to have Rich give us just a verbal on the status of the truck itself, its condition and its serviceability. So Rich, floor is yours.
Thanks, Matt. Just want to make sure, Deon, I'm good now? Okay. So during all the other town business, we were going back and forth on audio and video. So just a quick synopsis of how the committee came about. January eighth, we had our first meeting. One of the first things online was about buying a used truck from Bedford, New York. The committee discussed that and voted that down. We had a meeting on January eleventh, a special meeting where we went through the truck. February fifth, we decided that we would go right to the original source, right to the manufacturer. We sent a letter to Sutton requesting that a factory direct representative from the factory came out and inspected the truck. A quote was approved for fourteen, Sutton gave us a quote for fourteen hundred bucks to fly out to, they're in Ohio, to come to Connecticut and take a look at the truck. That quote was sent over to South Street. That was right around the same time that Chief Murphy had that devastating fire at his house, so he had other things on his plate, understandably, so it kind of sat for a couple of weeks. By the time we were able to track down the PO, get it to Sutton, COVID had, travel ban in the state of Ohio, travel ban for Sutton corporate, they could not come out. In the meantime, the end of March, Bethel Fire hired a company called First Line to do some of the repairs, not to the hydraulic system, but to the truck itself. In the middle of May, Sutton actually sent the representative out. They came out, they did the inspection of the truck. End of May, we got a copy of the, what that Sutton rep's findings were. Coincidentally, Bethel Fire had expressed a displeasure with the Sutton representative in the state of Connecticut. And that was not an industry secret, a lot of other fire departments are having trouble with that particular vendor. In the meantime, Sutton had changed their dealership and their service center to another company called Shipman's. So in the meantime, Shipman's announced that they were now the Sutton dealership and authorized rep. June first or thereabouts, Bethel Fire sends the truck to a local, they're up in Watertown called Gallons at Night Fire Apparatus Repair Place. They do a hydraulic service and the truck had been out of service since September and Bethel Fire put it in service the day of our meeting, saying that after nine months it was, it was fixed. We decided to stay the course. We sent the truck, we stuck with Plan A and we sent it to Shipman's. It was taken back out of service, sent to Shipman's. Shipman's went through everything, they gave me a quote for the repairs. The middle of, beginning of June, or middle of June, six nineteen, for a quarter of about eleven thousand dollars. The biggest issue was, you know, you're familiar with the truck and it has a ladder on the top and that ladder moves, well, that swivel right in the middle of the truck where the tower mounts to the truck was leaking. That's a pretty big repair. And keep in mind, this truck is a remount. So the aerial part was built in the seventies and the truck part was built in the two thousands. So right where the two, the umbilical cord that attaches to two was an issue. So trying to make sure that they had the right one, that fit and things like that was, was troublesome. But Shipman's and Sutton have been fantastic to work for, work with. I've been in contact with them almost daily. So they were very, very good. The truck was completely repaired. There's a laundry list of repairs that they made to the truck. When they get done doing a major repair like that, it's required that the truck be recertified by a third party. Shipman's hired a third party out of Rhode Island to come in and do a complete tower inspection, recertification, UL inspection, which they did. The truck was recertified. That truck has a water pump on it, a fire pump. So while they had it, they did pump testing on it, also recertified. The truck was returned to town on July sixth, fully repaired, fully recertified, fully good to go. The last copy of the purchase order I got was for thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And the truck's in service and that's that. I'll open the questions.
All right. So I want to, I just want to ask a couple of questions about recertifying because the reason the truck was taken out of service in September is that it was said to be unsafe. Is the truck safe?
Shipman's has given it, the original manufacturer has given it their blessing and said it's safe and the, again, the third party, Underwriters Laboratory, so UL testing has also certified the truck's safe.
Okay. What other repairs were, you said that there were, these were class two repairs?
There are different repairs. I mean, they did everything from, there was a missing sun visor, there were frayed seat belts. There, on the initial report, there were some engine, you know, the actual motor issues that I believe Bethel Fire had sent the truck to frontline, so they had repaired those. So Shipman's did not repair those. Some minor electrical issues, things like that. The biggest, the biggest repair was that swivel. And that swivel's been fixed.
Had there been any, to the best of your knowledge, you may not, you may not know, but if you looked at the records, was there any attempt to look at that or repair that before, or had that been isolated by the previous vendor as being the problem on there, or don't you know?
The swivel, the first I had heard of it, of all the records and everything that I had seen. The other thing that they found, one of the biggest issues presented to us, particularly when we inspected the truck up at Bethel High School, was a chatter. So particularly upon retracting, so when you have the aerial extended, when you start to come back together, there was a chatter, which is pretty common of a hydraulic issue. They did find a set screw in the pedestal, the control station where the guy on the ground would stand and operate the truck, there was a set screw that had backed out. So they were able to repair and replace and retune that set screw and that eliminated the chatter. They also replaced all the hydraulic fluid, hydraulic filters, everything. So they had done a complete overhaul of the hydraulic system.
Okay, so the chatter or the shutter, whatever it was in the ladder is gone now, correct?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay. All right, Rich and Paul, you guys have any questions?
Just, Rich, do you know what the cost for frontline to fix the engine or that other work that they, fire department did on the truck?
I don't, I don't have that, that was not done through us. BFD kind of did that on their own. So I'm sure Chief Murphy and his folks would have a price line in that. I only got involved in the prices that were done through us.
Okay, one other question, Rich. In your, now this, I'm going to ask you for a personal opinion in your experiences as chief. So what we have now is a, is a truck that is in service, working fine. At this point, it's got a thirteen-year-old truck and chassis and a forty-five-year-old ladder assembly. What is the remaining service life, would you expect on that? Like if this were, if this were your machine in your department, when, when would you say, okay, we really need to think about replacing this thing?
I would say within the next few budget cycles. I was, I've been around a long time. I was around when I believe Phil Valenti was the chief when they re-chassis that truck and they, they agreed that that, that would get them about thirteen to fifteen years and we're about thirteen years later. So, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to give the impression to anybody that we spent this thirteen thousand dollars, we fixed the truck, we're good to go and we're golden for another twenty years. I don't want to give that impression. The truck is safe, but the town does need to start making some serious plans to replace that truck within just a few years.
Okay. So we get a couple more years out of it if we, if we baby it along, correct?
I believe so.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Rich and Paul, let me, let me go back to you guys because I kind of interrupted there.
Now, Rich, I just like to thank you and the committee for doing an excellent job on this vehicle because, you know, basically, I want to say from my perspective, only on sitting on the Board of Selectmen, we were misdirected. And it's unfortunate because there's an element of credibility. When you set the spend like about one point seven million dollars versus a repair such as, which has been completed, I can understand what you're saying, you know, that we have maybe a life cycle, maybe two, three, four years at the most. But given, given every town is always looking for cost savings, cost savings in general, this is significant to me because, you know, I've got to say, and I say this without prejudice, you know, I need credibility. We need credibility relative to anything that's presented to the Board of Selectmen because we're certainly not the experts in the area like you are. Again, thank you for this excellent, excellent job that you and your committee have done. I really, I can tell you that the number of people that called me up and says, are we safe in this town? Can we operate without a ladder? And I've been telling them, you know, it's all, it's all due to this new committee and the committee has done an exceptional job. These are all Bethel residents who are just like you and I, taxpayers. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
Rich, what about the maintenance of the truck? Was the maintenance of the truck up to date, you know, did they look, I know that, you know, they were, they had come back to the Board of Selectmen and saying, you know, the Mr. Sutton had died and when he died, the plans went with him. You know, it's just the credibility thing. So, you know, was the maintenance up to par on the truck?
The, the, the Mr. Sutton dying and, and, and to be honest with you, I was still like you, I was skeptical when I heard that, that tale of woe. And then in speaking to Sutton, they sure enough came back and said, you know, that truck is a bit of an albatross, without a doubt. But it's, and so they had a little trouble tracking down, like, like I said, that swivel, that swivel is the umbilical cord that marries the forty-year-old truck with the fifteen-year-old truck. And so there was, there was a lot of give and take there on, on was the swivel fifteen years old or forty years old? As far as routine maintenance, the truck is inspected, again, that, that third-party testing, it's inspected every year. They usually do it around August, that's what Bethel has scheduled. There were some issues with providing documentation of their routine maintenance and what they had done. Chief Ingram, Fred Ingram was on the committee. Fred Ingram was a recent past chief at Bethel. Fred assisted the current chief, Scott Murphy, with locating some records. But to my knowledge, all of the service records for that apparatus were not produced. Again, I can't comment on what the record keeping were, I can just tell you that we did ask for complete maintenance and service records for the previous five years, that we provided the inspections, but we never really got a full, every time some, every time somebody laid a wrench on that truck, there was a report, we did not get that. And to my knowledge, Shipman's never got it either.
Rich, I believe that that record keeping is required under state statute, is it not?
I would imagine it's certainly under state statute. I would imagine it's under OSHA and I'm certainly, I'm reasonably confident it's under the NFPA specs, NFPA codes, which get thrown around so often.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Let me ask Rich another question here. Given, given your experience with this particular vehicle and perhaps all the other vehicles that we have, do we have a schedule of what needs to be done on each particular truck or like, let's just use this ladder truck as to what should be inspected each year?
The, the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association has certain standards. There is not, let me just preface this by saying, there isn't a fire department in the world that's fully NFPA compliant. It's the North Star. We always aim for it, but we never get there. So we, we do try to adhere to the standards, so the trucks are tested every year. What usually happens is you have the third-party test come in, they find everything from minor repairs up to class three, like this swivel was a class three repair, where it's bad enough that they'll do what's called red flag the truck and they'll take it out of service immediately. Just as a point of order, last August, when the truck was inspected, it was not taken out of service by the third-party testing, but the year prior, in 2018, it was taken out of service for some cracks and some welds, which were subsequently repaired. So, and that's not unusual, if trucks get red flagged all the time. So the, the truck is inspected and then usually what happens is after that inspection, there's a laundry list of repairs to be made and you send it to a qualified repair place to rectify those, those issues.
Thank you. Matt, you know, Matt?
Yeah.
This is another reason why, you know, I know I've spoken about this at the last Board of Selectmen. This, this is another reason why, you know, I know I've spoken about this at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting. We really should have a fire commission. I know we're looking into this because things like this can be avoided if you have a fire commission, you know, to make sure that our equipment is properly annualized as far as being inspected. You know, I'm a firm believer of, you know, saving money, but spend money to save money. And, you know, when, when you have a, a group of experts who can do this for us, this is perhaps the best thing for the town. And I know, you know, we have a police commission. It's really time for Bethel to have a fire commission.
Oh, I agree with that a hundred percent. And that's gonna be the topic of the next few meetings, is how, how we structure that. It doesn't need to be in the charter, but it can be in the town code. And that's something that we will begin working on immediately. I can do, I will say that. Rich and Paul, any other questions for Mr. Thode, for Chief Thode before he goes? Yeah, go ahead, Rich.
I just wanted to thank Rich and his committee also, you know, they put a lot of time in this, did the research and they found a solution to our immediate problem. So thank you, Rich, and thank your committee for us too. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much, Rich. If there are no other questions, we're gonna move on to item number eight. So thank you very much.
Tony Rubino's got a question, I think. No, no, guess not.
I think he, I think he might have been turning off his computer. I'm not sure. All right. Well, we're gonna move on to item number eight now. Thank you very much, Rich.
Thank you.
Item number eight is consideration of appointment of special counsel. I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that the Board of Selectmen appoint Attorney Charles Andrus from the law firm Barclay Damon as special counsel in the matter of a land use application for forty-seven Shelley Road. And this appointment is necessary because the town attorney, Mr. Waller, has recused himself from any consideration of this case to avoid any appearance of conflict of interest because he lives in the same neighborhood. So I, that's my motion is to appoint Charles Andrus, who's worked for, has done special counsel work for us in land use for many years. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Rich got his hand up first. So that'll be, that'll be Rich. Any, any discussion on that?
Nope.
And hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? That carries. Item number nine, because consideration of deer hunt application. I have given the letter, the, the proposal from the, for the Bethel controlled deer hunt, which has occurred. Marty, you can, if you want to weigh in on this. This is, the, Bethel has approved a controlled, a very limited controlled deer hunt for bow hunting for many years. Isn't that correct?
Believe it or not, I went back and looked in the file. We've approved guns as well.
Oh, really?
It's every year that I've been town council, and this is before even this administration, there's been an approval for a deer hunt. Different, different scenarios. The last couple of years, the scenario has been that they give us a waiver, they hold the town harmless. And then what happens at that point in time is we would be covered by, the town would be covered by our insurance carrier if something went wrong, but the hunters will not. And that's in the waiver itself. It says in there that they're gonna indemnify and hold the town harmless and that they also understand that they have no coverage by the town as well. And that's what we've done for the last four or five years. If you remember about, I'd say seven, eight, maybe ten years ago, they had an organization that actually got insurance, but they couldn't get that anymore, if I remember right.
Right. And so this proposal or this request is for bow hunting only. They're not, they're not asking for firearms.
Yeah, I don't, I haven't seen it, so.
Now, in the motion, do we need to list the properties where they are allowed to hunt?
I think it would be a good idea. In the past, there was a time too where the, I forget what the name of the club was in Bethel. They also asked for like bird hunting up around the reservoirs, you know, so.
That was a fish and game club.
Fish and game club, right. I, I think that you're talking about, we were talking, we've always talked about places where there's not really gatherings of people. You know, like, one of the reasons why the Frank property was, was not considered a place to hunt was because of the fact that there's walking trails down there, there's campsites down there. So that wasn't a good idea. But I think we've, I think in the past, we might have done Simpog. You know, basically, it's a swamp. Terra hot. And I know in some occasions, but I don't know if you want to continue to do that, the reservoirs as well and then around the reservoirs.
Well, we, we can't do reservoirs anymore because you need a, you need a state D P H permit to, to allow any kind of recreation. So we'd have to exclude that.
Okay. Talking about Terra hot and Simpog, basically. Simpog's the land that's around the Public Works Department.
Yep.
I can't think of any other land off the top of my head.
No, I, I think that's all that's been, all that's been done in the past. As a matter of fact, I'm not sure that we've ever allowed Simpog. Did you, can, can you clarify that?
They've never, I looked in the files. I mean, you know, I've got stuff that goes back for years here. And there's very few references in what town property it's been done in. I mean, if you want to give me a minute or two, I can look a little more to see if what's in here.
Well, Matt, when does, does this have to be done right away?
No, no.
I, I don't see any date that they're looking for.
Yeah, we, this, this doesn't have to be done just yet because it begins, I think they, they, they do the licenses in September, I think, as I recall.
First, it's around the first of September. It's the same day as the Scotty Fun picnic. They meet in the morning.
All right. You guys want to table this for, until the next meeting and take a look at it then? It'd be the first?
And I'll go through, I'll go through the file and, and, you know, because it goes back a lot of years. I'll go through the file and see if there's any reference to the exact lands that they were allowed on before.
The only ones I remember from signing the forms, signing the licenses last year was Terra hot. I don't think it mentioned anything else. So I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to expand it. Just do a.
Yeah, no, I understand. It's over the years, you know, they keep changing it, you know, so. They have from when it was originally.
Yeah.
Marty, we're gonna have to look into that. Marty?
Yeah, I'm listening.
We're, we're gonna have to look into that for the reservoir property too because the fishing game has always put birds up there and hunted on that property. So.
Yeah, that's.
This might be the time to, you know, make that decision. I know we talked about it P U C, that it's not really allowed.
Well, there's, there's been problems with that in the past anyway. I recall that there are some people that have houses not too far away from the reservoir. And a couple of times, they've ended up with some bird shot on trees on their property. That we're not talking recently, we're talking several years ago.
Yeah. All right. It's something we need to look at.
Let's just table that till we get a clarification from Marty.
All right. I'll put a motion on the floor that we table this to the next meeting.
Second.
All right. Paul seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that is tabled. Heading research. Okay, last item on agenda is request to display the pride flag. I forwarded a, a letter that I received on the seventh, as I mentioned, it was actually addressed to all three of us. This is the group that has for the last, I think, four years, put together the annual pride parade in Bethel. There is no pride parade due to the pandemic. And they, instead, there is a national pride day, which is, whoops. Oh, there we go. That's the request right there. There's a pride day which will be August first, twenty twenty. And it's, it's a, it's a one-day celebration. And the group, the steering committee for the pride parade has asked for permission to raise the pride flag at town hall on that date for one day. So I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we approve the request for displaying the flag for, on August first, twenty twenty. Is there a second?
And are there certain hours or is it just the day? I'm sorry.
Okay, just the day.
Okay.
Okay, floor is open for discussion.
That's just in front of town hall?
Yep.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Rich, any discussion?
No, it, you know, we do it for the other organizations in town, you know.
Yep. All right. And I'll try your minds. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And that motion carries. And that concludes our agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Rich seconded. All in, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, thank you, Deon. Thank you, Marty. Thank you to all the people who participated tonight. Appreciate it. Have a nice night. Stay safe.